Court of Honor for Tom Bradley. Make it happen, Tom, and we'll get it done.
And they did, but during a controversy over the arena's name. United Airlines has pledged nearly $70 million to renovate the stadium, but only if it is renamed United Airlines Memorial Coliseum. Critics say, no way. And now the airline has threatened to pull out. USC manages the stadium.
I'm hopeful that United Airlines and USC will come to a compromise that gives United Airlines the visibility they should have, as well as preserving the legacy for veterans.
How about United Airlines Field at Los Angeles Memorial Coliseum? They're talking about it. We'll know for sure long before the games return to Los Angeles in 2028.
Other inductees to the Court of Honor include LA politician Kenneth Hahn, former president of South Africa Nelson Mandela, and rocker Bruce Springsteen. Getting into college is a monumental step for high school seniors. The L.A. Dodgers Foundation, a nonprofit, celebrated this significant milestone by shining a spotlight on these students' accomplishments.
We're here because we think that signing day should not just be for elite athletes, but for young people like all of you who've worked so hard to earn those college acceptances.
All I can say is wow, wow, wow. 600 students, so many colleges, so many backgrounds. This is really tremendous.
So today, we're hosting 600 kids from local high schools who are all pledging what colleges they're going to be attending in the fall. We partnered with College Spring, an organization really dedicated to equipping students with SAT and ACT prep and ensuring that they have the knowledge that they need in order to go to college and succeed. It's important to celebrate today, regardless of where you're going to school, but just the mere fact that you are going and that you have achieved a significant milestone in your life.
I will be attending UCR this fall.
Be attending UC Berkeley in the fall.
And I will be attending UC Santa Barbara this fall.
That I will be attending Dickinson College as a posse scholar.
I will be attending UC Davis this fall.
What does that mean to you?
It means so much to me because I want to be able to prove to my younger sisters, since I am an older sister, that they can do it too and that they have someone there for them to help them.
You deserve this. You've earned this, and you should be so very proud.
Since launching in 2008, nearly 25,000 students from low-income backgrounds have benefited from College Springs program. They're helping fight hunger and prevent food waste at the same time. Food Forward is a nonprofit dedicated to providing healthy options to underserved communities. Rasha Goel has more.
So why do we see so many happy faces while picking out their greens? It's because they're at a free farmer's market where they can take home their veggies at no cost, all thanks to Food Forward, a nonprofit organization that gathers food and distributes it to more than 200 charitable groups across a five-county region.
Food Forward rescues produce that would otherwise go to waste. We collect from backyards, farms, public spaces, farmer's markets, and wholesale locations, and donate to local hunger relief agencies.
This free farmer's market was held in conjunction with Simi at the Garden in Simi Valley, where over 175 people walk through on a given day. This particular farmer's market is held on the last Tuesday of every month, and it's just one of the many groups that Food Forward works with.
So in October of 2017, we did our first free farmer's market in partnership with Food Forward, and there was such a demand in the community. One of the reasons is because there's no qualification. So if a family's short on food for the month and they come down, they get their food. If they don't need it the following month, then we don't see them.
This year marks 10 years for Food Forward, who has recovered and donated over 70 million pounds of produce. At 78 years old, individuals like Bernardo McCarron, who have been volunteering for the past year and a half, say it brings them so much joy.
I give people food that they need, and also, it's gratifying to me because I'm doing service for somebody else that I enjoy.
Over 10,000 community members participate at over 190 produce recovery events every month.
It's a win-win-win-win-win for everyone. There's volunteers that get to come out and get some exercise and feel good about themselves. People are receiving produce. Food is not going to waste. And really, our harvesting food, fighting hunger, and building community message shines through through these community partnerships.
Would you like asparagus?
Of course. I wasn't about to leave without my favorite asparagus.
Los Angeles Trade Technical College has gone green. New solar panels and electric car charging stations will not only benefit the environment, but they will also offer living labs to students who are training in solar or transportation careers.
This new solar installation represents the future of jobs, a vision for Los Angeles that's truly sustainable and a city that's powered by Angelino's. We're striving for 100% renewable energy in the future, mainly from energies that are coming from solar power and hydro.
Today, we recognize and applaud the wonderful energy savings achieved through construction of this 285-kilowatt solar system at the Trade Tech parking structure. Your achievement will help LADWP efforts to reduce electrical demand and lower the strain on the grid, greatly contributing to the future sustainability of our city. This is the first one that I felt really embodies what we're trying to do in the city of Los Angeles, where we're really helping each other make a better city.
They redefined pop music as we know it, creating a dedicated fan phenomenon that still exists almost 30 years later. And now, fans of the Backstreet Boys can get up close and personal with a one-of-a-kind, ultimate fan experience. Rasha Goel takes us to the Grammy Museum's latest exhibit.
Music lover or not, this is one exhibit you won't want to miss. The Backstreet Boys Experience at the L.A. Live Grammy Museum takes you through their journey, on and offstage, along with some key memorabilia.
It's basically all things Backstreet Boys. There are original objects provided by the group, and then there's a ton of really cool, interactive components here that just makes for a great fan experience.
What's unique about this exhibition is the interactive experience. All right, Backstreet Boys fans, this is your chance to send them your personal message. This right here is the confession booth. You can record your message here, which will then be sent to them. And hey, if you're in the mood for taking some pictures and maybe grabbing that selfie, well, guess what? Hop on right over here.
We have this really cool hologram. And what this hologram is, it allows guests to actually either take a selfie with the Backstreet Boys, or they can sing with the Backstreet Boys. And then that sort of video is captured and then sent back to the guest. So then you could post that on social media, share it with your friends and family. Just let people know you got to hang out with the Backstreet Boys.
And talk about commitment to fans. The Boys were fully involved and hands-on when it came to this exhibit. They contributed some very personal items, things that you can only get a glimpse of here.
What we wanted to do is create an environment, an immersive environment, to give back to the fans. And this was something, that was a message that they wanted to hit on just right out the gate. They really wanted to put a personal spin on this. So there's one section in this exhibition that features wedding albums and baptism photos. I mean, we have AJ's onesie that he wore when he came back from the hospital the day he was born. So really cool stuff here. There's a lot to see. There's a lot of stuff here for everyone.
And some fun facts about the Backstreet Boys? They are the best-selling boy band with 130 million records worldwide. Their 2019 album, DNA, debuted at number one more than two decades after the band was formed. And the album's lead single, "Don't Go Breaking My Heart", was nominated for Pop Duo and Group Performance at this year's Grammy Awards. From clothing and costuming to this wall of pictures with actual fans and moments from across the world, there is plenty to enjoy.
Whether you're a Backstreet Boys fan or a music and baseball fan, that's great. But then there's also an educational component, too. So there's this really cool sort of dynamic that we've created here where it's educational but entertaining at the same time.
So come on down and check out the Backstreet Boys Experience. It's your chance to sing or send a message to them while experiencing this boy band phenomenon.
The exhibit runs until September 2nd. More info at gramymuseum.org. Well, from pop to hip-hop, another photo exhibit highlights the musical artists and the photographers who not only helped shape hip-hop culture as we know it today, but also impacted politics, culture, and social movements around the world.
It's hard to believe, but hip-hop is now 40 years old. It's actually middle-aged, but it is still as vibrant as ever, and this exhibit captures that. For example, Salt n' Pepper, when they first started out. Or how about Tupac or Snoop Dogg before they became legendary mega-artists.
I refer to this as like the Mona Lisa of hip-hop. The photographer talks about how he wanted to portray Biggie as a king.
Notorious B.I.G., Cardi B, the one and only Beyoncé, and Jay-Z. The exhibit Contact High: A Visual History of Hip-Hop takes us down memory lane in the vast and varied history of hip-hop, but it also includes its newest and greatest current artists.
You have Kanye's first photo shoot, Wu-Tang's first cover shoot.
But Vicky Toback, curator of the exhibit Contact High and author of a book by the same name, makes it clear that this visual show is as much about the photographers who captured hip-hop history as it is about the artist who created its music.
A lot of times, the photographers weren't professionally trained, per se, but they were part of the culture. And so when hip-hop started in the Bronx in the '70s, they were right there. Hip-hop wasn't on the radio yet. You had to go to parks, roller rinks, local DJ spaces to even hear it. And it was just this music of everyday peoples.
L.A., by the way, has its own historic corner in the exhibit.
You can see in the photos this moment where L.A. kind of comes into its own. It looked different. It had the white tees, the Dickies, the car culture, the tattoo culture, the lowrider culture. Like, that was very much an L.A. signature.
Rest in peace, Nipsey.
Pictures like that of the late Nipsey Hussle capture that L.A. moment, and there are so many L.A. moments.
I love when you can see the neighborhoods and really the places that made L.A. hip-hop.
Altogether, more than 100 historic photos capturing iconic hip-hop artists. Not bad for a musical tradition few thought would last, but last it has, influencing many other types of music.
Hip-hop always just portrayed itself as being raw and real and speaking truth to power. People connect to that. Fast forward now to it being a dominant global phenomenon.
The exhibit at the Annenberg Space for Photography stays open until August 18th of this year, and it's free. The South L.A. community got together to rededicate a beloved neighborhood park. From carnival games, dunk tank, face painting, and lucha libre wrestlers, it was fun for the entire family.
Let's give a big round of applause for South Park 2.0.
Today, we're unveiling a new and improved South Park.
I don't know if everybody realizes, but this year is 120 years this park has been in existence. That is a long time. This is one of the first parks in the city of Los Angeles.
The L.A. Times called it "the Monte Carlo of Los Angeles" minus "the wicked jingle of the coin."
I live right here in the neighborhood, so I've been aware of this park since the late '50s.
Our parents used to bring us here when we were kids. I haven't seen it look so good in years.
Our generation isn't the generation that just holds things together. We're the generation that are going to create. We're going to rehabilitate. This will be one of the examples of what can happen when a community comes together with a vision. My message to the community is, these weren't dollars that Kern Price or Eric Garcetti had. These are your tax dollars. And because we're spending your tax dollars in your community, now it's your responsibility. Keep it clean, keep it safe, and use it. A park loves to be loved. Investment is not just in the grounds and in the grass and in the trees. It's an investment in the people who live in this community.
Put your best foot forward, every individual. Put your best foot forward.
I'm just praying and hoping that they upkeep, stay up, and that we all come together as one to do whatever we need to do to benefit the neighborhood.
We must really love one another. We must love our communities and do everything we can to keep it safe and clean.
There was even more family fun at the city's Earth Day celebration as folks learned about conservation and even brought home some trees.
I think in our home, for example, the importance of recycling, the importance of making sure we can conserve water to make sure that our planet could survive for generations to come.
Recycling, the most basic of things, papers, cans, at home, that's something that everyone can do. Ensuring that nothing gets thrown on the street that will contaminate not just our water, but it'll blight our public spaces. We all want things to look clean and beautiful.
I conserve water, and I reuse and recycle items.
And to help the earth, I conserve water and take short showers.
I recycle whenever I can, conserve water.
Earth Day should actually be every day.
Councilmember Paul Corretts gets a special honor. A new Green Deal is announced by the mayor, and the city's first two-way bike lanes are coming to downtown L.A. All this in City Beat. As Earth Day celebrations and education continue in Los Angeles, Councilmember Paul Corretts was honored for his 30-plus years of forward-thinking environmental policy and action. His contributions are almost too many to list, as Councilmember Mike Bonnet pointed out at a recent surprise ceremony in City Council.
Mr. Corretts, would you please come up and join us? I really appreciate this. I don't know what to say. This means a lot to me, something I care so much about. Save our planet and save our species, save our wildlife, and keep L.A. and the rest of the world as it should be. So thank you so much.
Thank you. Congratulations.
And along those lines, Mayor Eric Garcetti unveiled L.A.'s Green New Deal, a plan designed to greatly expand Los Angeles's strong commitment to renewable energy, resulting in a cleaner, safer Los Angeles for decades to come. As use of bicycle transportation continues to grow, Councilmember Jose Huizar unveiled the city's first two-way bike lane in downtown L.A. The improvement is designed in part to allow residents easier access to downtown's historic core. Las Feliz celebrates a brand-new playground, thanks to the Department of Wreck and Parks and Councilmember David Rue.
All right, we're going to get started because I honestly do not want to take these three-year-olds on. I really want to thank everyone for joining us today for the opening of this very new playground. This is what a park is supposed to be, an open space for all, and of course, especially for our young children. What do you think? There was a call from the community in Las Feliz. They needed a playground, and this is like the newest and greatest addition to Griffith Park.
We're so happy to be celebrating this amazing event, this incredible playground, and we definitely look forward to welcoming more spaces like this in the Las Feliz community.
Playgrounds are the very first introduction of our kids to the parks. Our goal is, is when we get the kids coming into the park through the playground, then we're able to introduce them to the other really magical pieces of the park system.
I always like to cite the saying that we need more green time and less screen time.
This means so much to me because when I was growing up as a child, we lived in a two-bedroom, 700-square-foot apartment, and we had no front yard or backyard. And it was parks. It was public parks, in particular Griffith Park, where I came to play.
Get on the Do Good Bus and do some good. A citywide open firehouse celebration kicks off, and get ready to move to the beat as Summer of Salsa returns. All this and Things to Do. If you've been wanting to get involved in your community but haven't been sure where to start, then just hop on the Do Good Bus. You'll meet like-minded folks for a day of games, fun, and a volunteer opportunity at a mystery location. Try out the Do Good Bus on Saturday, May 11th, from 8:15 a.m. The latest pack of do-gooders board the bus at Echo Park Lake on 751 Echo Park Avenue. For more details, check out their listing on Eventbrite.com. You're invited to bring the entire family for the LAFD Fire Service Day 2019, a citywide open firehouse celebration. Get to know your local fire crews in this 2019 LAFD Fire Service Day, happening Saturday, May 11th, from 10 a.m. to 4 p.m. To locate your nearest fire station, visit lafd.org/station/station/results. La Plaza de Cultura y Artes invites you to Summer of Salsa, a free concert series held at this historic, open-air venue. Gracing the stage on May 10th will be Ricardo Lembo and Makina Loca. Summer of Salsa, featuring Ricardo Lembo and Makina Loca, takes place Friday, May 10th, beginning at 6 p.m. For more info, visit lapca.org. And that's a look at Some Things to Do. That's it for this edition. I'm Yana Kay. From all of us here at L.A. This Week, thanks for joining us. A reminder that you can catch us online at lacityview.org. We're also on Facebook, Twitter, and YouTube. See you next time for more of L.A. This Week.
Good morning, good morning, everybody. Good morning. Shhh. Can I have everyone please take a seat? Good morning again. Today is Wednesday, May 8th. Want to welcome you to City Hall, to this Los Angeles City Council meeting. We meet every Tuesday, Wednesday, and Friday. The public is welcome. Mr. Clerk, we do have a quorum. Would you, shhh, would you please call the roll?
Blumenthal, Bonn, Buscaino, Sadio, Harris, Dawson, Weezer, Carr, Escobar, Martinez, Ofero, Price, Rodriguez, Rue, Smith, and Wesson. Ten members present in the quorum. Mr. President.
Thank you. First order of business.
Approval of the minutes.
Buscaino moves. Rue seconds, next.
Commendatory resolutions for approval.
Price moves. Ofero seconds, next.
Mr. President, there is a request to continue Item 1E to June 7th, 2019. Again, 1E to June 7th.
So ordered. Continue.
Items 1 and 2 are items noticed for public hearing. We do have...
You have cards? Well, why don't we move on to the next set of agenda items?
Very good, sir. Items 3 through 15 are items for which public hearings have been held.
Okay. Any specials members? Let's prepare to vote on these items. Madam Clerk, open the roll. Close the roll. Tabulate the vote.
10 ayes.
Thank you. Continue, Mr. Clerk.
Very good, sir. And, Mr. President, Item 5 that was just adopted is an ordinance that will go over one week for a second read unless reconsidered later today with 12 members.
Okay. Let's be mindful of that.
Very good, sir. Item 16 is an item for which public hearing has not been held. 10 votes are required for consideration.
Okay, so without objection, that item is now before this body. Do you have cards on that item?
Yes, sir, we do.
All right, then let's move on.
On the continuation agenda, Item 17 is an item for which a public hearing has not been held. 10 votes are required for that as well.
Okay, so without objection, that item is before us as well. Cards on that item?
Yes, sir.
Okay, that brings us where?
Mr. President, that takes council back to presentations. Item called special or general public comment for items not on council's agenda.
Okay, Mr. Previn, if you would head up this way. We're going to go multi-public comment. Mr. Previn, you have 1 through 1E, and then you have Items 2, 16, 17, and your general public comment. Mr. Clerk, set the clock.
Thank you, sir. Is there any chance we can get the tourism report up front so we could react?
Mr. Previn, go on and speak to your items.
We just got so much tourism going on with the Olympics yesterday and today on the agenda, there's no way we can hear it. We'll hear it later. All right, whatever, sir. I think you know I like to hear those reports because they're so thoughtful. I'd like to say congratulations to Weezer, who doesn't seem to be in evidence now for having the highest lean today. He's at 77.30 in his district over on East 17th. In second place, it was extremely close. We had two battlers from the old school, Mr. Sadio duking it out with David Rue, but Sadio is too strong in the long run, and he got one for 5,378 against a constituent over on Griffin. And Rue edged out the great Kern Price, just to let the young folks know they are still, they're still swinging. And he, I think Rue is at 39.10, just 53 bucks ahead of Kern Price, who is at 38.57. So it's a great agenda, and we do appreciate that, sir, I gotta say. The one that definitely is worth noting is IBM, because they're taking $176,000 refund right back on their 369-year-to-date lobby, not year-to-date, program-to-date lobbying down here. Now, only about 161 was England or Canadian.
Mr. Previn, I'm not sure that you're on an agenda item. Would you please connect up?
Well, sir, I'm connecting as best I can. I mean, IBM is a treasured partner over at the county and the city. They lobby aggressively. Now, it's Vectus as a public company.
Which agenda item are you on, Mr. Previn?
Well, I'm not going to go through and look it up for you.
Mr. Previn, you know the rules, so get on the agenda item or we can go straight to your general public comment.
Our third-party administrator for $79,000 refund. These refunds are terrific. Everybody appreciated Mr. Price's $50,000 refund yesterday, but giving back the taxpayer money makes folks read the newspaper and go, hmm, what's going on?
Yeah, Mr. Previn, the refunds are not open to public comment. We had the hearing in committee.
Okay, let's give Mr. Previn his one minute for general public comment.
All right, well, your civil rights commission...
So he can speak about whatever he wants.
Right, because there are a dozen items that I would love to speak on that you improperly block. So I'll just get to the general public comment. I want to congratulate you on putting together a civil rights commission. One of the first things you should look at is making bilingual warning notices here in City Hall, because individuals who hablo español need to be also protected for the constitutional, you know, right to be in City Hall. We want everybody to feel comfortable in City Hall, sir. I know you've got some boundary issues there, but you need to change that. Mr. Fuer has been notified repeatedly, no civil rights commission can stand up with a straight face and living with it in one language and in a hobbled version that makes it seem like it's all about frog marching out the public. That's not what it's for. And the other thing, sir, is that you need to put in writing that you're going to be providing paper meeting agendas, because that took everybody's notice. When people come down here and thump for around trying to understand what you put on the agenda, that you won't let people speak on. It's a big red flag. And, sir, I know there's been a lot of issues today. In the New York Times, they're looking at Mayor de Blasio in New York about how he was soliciting...
Thank you, Mr. Previn. Thank you. Mr. Sax? Mr. Arnold Sax? Mr. Sax, come forward. 1, you have Items 1, 2, 15, and 17.
No, no, no. Excuse me, sir.
16.
16, thank you, sir. I'm certainly glad you can count. So, good morning. Welcome to the snooze fest while the city council snoozes.
Are you going to get on the items, Mr. Sax?
Item 16, I'm sorry, you're right. So I have a correction. I have a question for the city attorney. It says to establish an executive director. I would think that you were establishing the position of an executive director for this commission. And I would hope that you would agree that it would be establishment of a position, because you'd want to have qualifications for that established position. You'd want him to be open and transparent. You'd want him to be open to new ideas. You'd want him to be caring. You'd want him to be honest. You want him to be, take charge. You want to be considerate of public and public opinions and public ideas. You'd want him to be thoughtful. You'd want him to know the rules. You'd want him to do all these things. You'd want him to be, you'd want him to embrace the whole city. You know, you go around the city and you see the homeless people. I was in, going on the bus under the 405 freeway, it's wall-to-wall tent city. You want him to be embraced of the whole city and not just like the Grand Avenue project that's going to get $250 million of public money. So you need to have somebody who is worldly in their views of the whole city and not just stuck in their own one particular little city council spot. You need to have somebody who pays attention. You need to have somebody who actually knows what's going on. You know, somebody Eric Previn just mentioned in New York Times. You need to know that it's not global warming, it's global population. You need to have somebody who's able to take care of all these Civil and Human Rights Commission agenda items. That's what you really need. And there's also one further requirement for this position of executive director. Now, some of you may have thought that I'm describing a particular person, and I was. It's you, Mr. Wesson. You, Wesson world. This is Wesson world, and you're in charge. So you would be perfect for this commission, except for that one little part that you don't qualify for. But before I get to that, let me say something about, something. Come to the meeting, and you'll find out the difference between civil service employees, DWP employees, and, I can't think of the word. I'm so, I'm so stuck on your graciousness, Mr. Wesson. And I really look forward to you being on our commission, except for the one part that you don't measure up to, and that's height. You need to be over two inches. And for where I'm sitting, you still have an inch to go.
Mr. Herman? Let's bring Mr. Herman forward. You have Items 1A through 1E. Then you have Items 2 and 17, your general public comment. Mr. Herman, okay, start his clock. And Item 16.
Leans are very unconstitutional. Leans that jeopardize your way of housing.
Mr. Herman, you need to speak, address the body and speak into the mic.
Housing is a threat nowadays in the city of Los Angeles, just like me raising my voice is a threat. In CD 9 off of 807 East 27th Street, a lien for $3,857.48. We should thank Kern Price for that, because he made the alleytime news on his issues of housing and development and developers. What about in CD 14? Jose Weezer brought the FBI to 1440 East 17th Street for $7,730.92. And that's the real reason why I'm here, protecting the advocacy of you, the quiet voice of the public. How can we defend ourselves from such allegations and mistruths about the lien process that the Department of Building and Safety holds all of you hostage? All of you hostage because the color of our skin? And what about in CD 1, off of North Griffin Avenue? Thank you, Mr. Sadio. You're going to waive the interest. You're going to allow the person at 3906 North Griffin Avenue to have this lien.
Mr. Herman, bring it down a little bit. Bring it down.
Thank you, Mr. Sadio. You're the only so-called honest politician that I know. And last, what about in CD 7? Who's in CD 7? I can't remember, but from what I understand, Monica Rodriguez, mommy, mommy, is very upset. She says she's going to help her constituent off of 10132 North Little Canyon Boulevard for $2,882.43. That's why I'm here in protest, motherfucker! Then, I go onto Item Number 16, because I want to stay on topic, follow the quorum rules under the Ralph and Brown Act, the BAIN Act, which simply states what a threat is. City Attorney...
Stay on topic.
...ordered a consideration relative to establishing a Civil and Human Rights Commission. Well, what are your rights if you don't have due process? What is your rights if you have allegations under strategic lawsuits against the public for speaking out against criminals in the city of Los Angeles? I'm a hostage. NRA, NRA, NRA!
Get on topic, Mr. Herman.
Nothing real about my attitude, that's NRA. Nothing real about my attitude, other than I know for a fact, fuck you, 42 SC 1983, bitch, bitch, bitch!
Give him his one minute.
Now, as far as my public comment, I was introduced to a claim, and I brought the claim for damages because I felt threatened. I felt threatened because of my First Amendment. I submit a public card, and I hold a sign up that says, "Fuck you! Fuck all of you because of the bad things you criminals do to the public." The same way Jose Weezer brought the FBI in investigation with Kern Price, Mr. Rue, Norrie Martinez, and you, Mr. President. Why have you engaged in corruption? Why are you abusive to the public? What's a strategic lawsuit against the public?
Mr. Herman, please, please speak into the mic.
BAIN-Lee-Kean Act protects my rights to defend myself under 42 SC 12101. And don't discriminate. This is retaliation. This has always been retaliation. I've been coming here since 2000. It's all about the game, the way Harris Dawson is being investigated by the FBI with Jose Weezer.
Thank you. Thank you. Thank you. Your time's expired. Mr. City Attorney, Mr. Clerk, that ends our multi-comment section. Let's vote. Madam Clerk, on Items 16 and 17 right now. We'll hold 17. We'll close the comment on that item. So we'll vote on 16. Let's open the roll. Close the roll. Tabulate the vote.
12 ayes.
Mr. Clerk, we are now at 12 members. Do you want to vote on reconsideration if you would read those items?
Yes, sir. We have Item 5 before us for reconsideration. It's a two-vote matter, first to reconsider, second on the item.
Got you. So let's vote on reconsideration on Item 5. Please, Madam Clerk, open the roll. Close the roll. Tabulate the vote.
12 ayes.
Now, we'll actually vote on the item. Please, open the roll. Close the roll. Tabulate the vote.
12 ayes.
Thank you. Mr. Buscaino for a quick introduction.
Members, it gives me great joy and pleasure to introduce you officially and welcome to the city council chambers, our newest SCAG executive director, Comey Ajese. Let's give him a round of applause and welcome him as our newest executive director of SCAG. We, as you know, we value our relationships and advocacy work alongside the California League of... We, as you know, we value our relationships and advocacy work alongside the California League of Cities and National League of Cities. But here at the Southern California Association of Governments is the largest, the nation's largest metropolitan planning organization, representing six counties, 191 cities, and nearly 19 million residents, which indeed is a challenging task. And Mister Ajese was appointed to lead SCAG in early April and after serving as planning director since 2017. He has over 30 years of experience in regional planning and transportation, including serving as chief deputy director of Caltrans. He is joined here by his daughter Sarah, who is in the back.
Give her a round of applause.
Thank you, Sarah.
Welcome.
And one of his team members from SCAG, Javier Cartanega. So, Comey also has served, as you heard, Caltrans Deputy Director of Planning and Model Programs and was responsible for overseeing the mass transportation, rail transportation planning, local assistance and research innovation and system innovation divisions. So, he is no stranger to the issue of transportation in this region and around the state. We are very blessed and fortunate to have, there's Sarah, to have Comey that just has such a wealth of knowledge and experience in the helm of such an important organization. And I've been given opportunity to personally introduce you to Comey. And we are looking forward to your partnership, your advocacy. And the city of Los Angeles has been a member of SCAG for many, many, many years. So, while your offices are not too far from here, please do consider this your home as well. So, help me again welcome Mister Ajese as the official first welcome to the city of Los Angeles, the newest executive director of the Southern California Association of Governments. Thank you very much.
Welcome. Good morning, Madam President and members. In fact, why don't, I'll ask you, Aaron, do you want to bring the rest of the crew up here with us? I think we should. Why don't we, in a minute, I'm gonna introduce you to a very important man. He's got board members with him today, relatives and staff and volunteers. Colleagues, it's my pleasure to present to you Aaron Leonard, who is the founder and executive director of an organization called Pure Hearts Are Us. Plus, what I just found out a few weeks ago, he is a neighbor of mine. He lives on Wellington. He lives in Wellington Square where I live. Back in 2005, Mister Leonard was a very successful real estate developer, earning over six figures. Everything was just working the way he wanted it. And then, all of a sudden, the financial crash in the world occurred. And within a matter of six months, Mister Leonard lost almost everything. Now, he could have just quit, but he was determined to not only make things right for himself, but to also help other people because he knew how many individuals had, were experiencing the same kinds of challenges that he was experiencing. So, he began to volunteer for an organization called Neighborhood Assistance Corporation of America. And he was like a dry sponge, just sucking up all of the knowledge that he could get from this organization where it related to homeowner assistance. And then, with that, he would also factor in some of his own ideas. So, he wanted to know more. So, he was introduced to an organization which is Neighbor Works of America. And there, he was trained and certified as a home ownership education counselor. And it was there that his organ, his organization, Pure Hearts Are Us, was born. His desire to take all of his skills and all of his knowledge and pass it on with individuals who needed assistance throughout this region. And that dream of his, that little bitty idea of his, has now grown into three different operations or operations in three different cities, in the city of Los Angeles, in Palmdale, and in Covina. Now, I can speak from experience that sometimes there are challenging, challenges in life and somehow, sometimes you get yourself twisted. But I can also speak from experience that with a good plan and with help and with guidance, you can get untwisted. And that's the important gift that this organization, led by my neighbor Aaron, is giving to individuals throughout hundreds and hundreds and hundreds of families throughout this region. He is joined today by members of his board, staff, and some volunteers. I'm gonna present them with resolutions in the back or certificates in the back. But I do want to acknowledge their presence. We have board members, and I met her earlier, Judith, where are you? Raise your hand. Judith Carney. Bobby Laster. Brian Terry, raise your hand. Let's give them a round of applause. Staff members that are here, probably the blood and guts of the operation. Claudette, Claudette Welch, raise your hand. And Terry Montgomery. Let's give them a round of applause. Also, some of the support staff, David Steiniger. And we have with us today James Sanders. And did Pastor Amos make it? And we have Pastor John Amos with us. Ladies and gentlemen, life is not always a bowl of cherries. Sometimes there are, you know, ups and downs and we just need a hand to help navigate our way through these challenges. And I, I would think that Mister Leonard here is a perfect example of an individual that was riding high, hit the bottom, came back up, and now he's helping other people. I'm gonna ask him to address you for a few minutes. Please give a rounder, a round of applause to the founder of Pure Hearts Are Us, Aaron Leonard. Give him a round.
Thank you, thank you. The Honorable Herb Wesson and council members, thank you so much. Thank you, Pure Hearts Are Us, for taking time out, my family, my staff, my board, to recognize a special day. And thank you, guys, for looking at the work that we diligently do every day, helping home buyers save their houses from foreclosure, helping new buyers that want to become a homeowner, counseling them and getting them into the right programs. And I'd like to thank all the banks that work with us for the down payment assistance programs that they do on a daily basis for us. Today's a special day. I never thought this day would come, guys, where we receive a precious award like this through City Hall. I'm from Los Angeles. My dad was a pastor. And I wish he could be here today to see a wonderful day.
But your mom's here.
My mother's here, my mother's here, and my brother's here. And these are tears of joy. The hard work that Pure Hearts Are Us has done and the challenges that we've gone through and the doors that we're trying to open and get people to look at the hard work we're doing to, to help the community become homeowners. I'm so proud and so happy today has come. But we have a long way to go, guys, a long way to go. And I just wanted to say thank you for your time today. We're kicking off an initiative to put 1 million families into homes. So, we need your assistance. We need your, your help, your, your, your resources. And everyone that can open these doors for us to let the community know that we are here to help them buy homes in your community, the city of Los Angeles, the county of Los Angeles. And thank you again, everyone. God bless you. Thank you.
Thank you. And where's Wanda? Wanda, come on in. I just want to quickly, come on. Quickly introduce Wanda Johnson, a dear friend of mine since 1991. And she introduced me to Aaron. And let's just give her a round of applause because she's just a sweetheart. And to Aaron, there is absolutely nothing wrong with tears of joy. Ladies and gentlemen, I'd like to present this to Aaron and to Pure Hearts Are Us. Let's just take it quick, we're gonna go in the back. Here, come on, follow me.
Mister Alfer, are you ready for your presentation, sir?
Great.
Thank you, Madam President. I'd like to introduce the girls and boys cross-country teams from Belmont High School in 13th District. Go Sentinels! Now, Belmont High is one of the sources of pride in the 13th District. And what they're doing at that school is, is quite amazing academically and, of course, with their track teams. We have some very special guests today. First of all, my friend and constituent Roman Gomez Villa is here, the coach of the teams. And he was joined by Principal Dr. Mendoza. And, and I want to mention all of these athletes by name before we start our remarks. From the girls' team, we've got Captain Guadalupe Hernandez, Andrea Utwe, Ashley Herrera, Camilia Tizoc, Roxana Gonzalez, Sherilyn Munoz, Allison Pastor Cabrera. From the boys' team, we have Captain Jeremy Martinez, Christian Vicente, Denelson Cup, Brian Juarez, Lester Solis, Rodrigo, uh, Rodri, sorry, Rodrigo Rosario, and Luis Muniz. Big round of applause for our star athletes from Belmont High School. So, the girls are the 2018 Division Four CIF Los Angeles City Champions, led by Coach Gomez. This talented team of girls, cross-country competitors, were undefeated all year and went on to win the city championship, the first city title for the girls in 25 years. Six of the seven varsity runners are returning next year. Roxana Gonzalez will be attending UC Mercedes. To share a few words on this triumphant win, the girls' captain, Guadalupe Hernandez, is going to say a few words. Guadalupe.
I deleted it.
Did you find it? Just speak from the heart.
Okay.
Yeah.
Um, hi. Um, my name is Guadalupe Hernandez. Um, I just want to, um, say that I'm thankful to be here. And I want to thank all my teammates for doing their best and helping us win a city title after many years. Each and one of them did everything they were supposed to do and they all tried their best. I want to thank my coach for helping us and pushing us through everything. And I'm glad we went down in history. Um, most of us didn't think that we were gonna make it, but I'm glad we did. It was a special moment for all of us, both boys and the girls. And, and we tried really hard and we got to where we were. Thank you.
Thank you. Good job. Good job, Guadalupe. So, the 2018 Boys Division Four CIF Los Angeles City, they're the runner-up champions this year. But it should be noted that the Belmont Cross Country Boys Team came in second place, just two points behind the first-place team. Otherwise, it would have been a three-peat. However, five of the seven varsity runners are returning next year. So, we're definitely rooting for what will be a first-place comeback. Brian Juarez is enlisting in the U.S. Marines. And Luis Muniz will be attending Los Angeles Trade Tech College this fall. To share a few words about the boys' team and the past season, we have Captain Jeremy Martinez. Jeremy.
All right. So, good morning, everyone. My name is Jeremy Martinez. First, I would like to say it's an honor to stand before you and represent Belmont, not only as an athlete, but also as a student. I would like to thank the city councils for having us yet again. Also, I would like to acknowledge the support we received during the season from our school, our parents, and most importantly, our Coach Gomez. Sorry. I'm very proud to say I'm a scholar athlete from Belmont High School. I'm very proud of my teammates and what we were able to accomplish this year. During the summer, we ran really hard and tried to get in shape for the season. And during the season, we continued to work hard and do what we're supposed to do to attain our goals. As you see, the girls got the results they wanted. Unfortunately for us, we weren't as fortunate. We came up short by two, two points and we lost the city's title. But despite all the things that happened that day, I believe we came out stronger, more, we bonded even more. I'm sorry. Oh, yeah, and we are ready to take on any challenges we have ahead of us. And that's pretty much it. Thank you.
You got it. Thank you, Jeremy. So, check this out. In all, Belmont has won over 51 LEUSD city titles, including the boys' team, the girls' team, junior varsity, and the freshman and sophomore team titles. Belmont Cross Country has graduated almost 100% of its athletes for the last six years. During the same time, 95% of Belmont High School graduates have been accepted to two- and four-year colleges. The overall grade point average for the boys' and girls' team this year was 3.4. A championship team can only have a champion as its coach. And that is someone that you're gonna hear from right now, who can tell you a lot about the history and his own history with Belmont High School. And that is Coach Roman Gomez. Coach.
Thank you. Good morning, Mr. President, council members. Thank you for once again inviting us. We are blessed and thankful to be here once again. But this wouldn't have happened if it wasn't for the effort and the discipline our kids put in day in and day out. I am so proud of them. Our Principal Dr. Mendoza is here to support our teams like she has since she came into Belmont a couple of years ago. We want to continue to support our kids. I also want to present something else for our council member. We want to be able to... We want to be able to give them a, a new gift to Councilmember Ofero. It's a hoodie with a BHS. We gave him a jersey last, last year. We're giving him a sweater, and we hope to come back and suit him up. It's a little small, I think it's perfect.
I'll just, okay? I'll just bust through it.
That's right. Now, this is perfect.
Congratulations, Mr. Ofero. Very nice.
Where's the other banner? You know, Mitch Ofero was very supportive during our strike, and he brought us donuts and coffee when it was very cold and raining out there. So all the teachers at Belmont High School want to present Mr. Ofero with a signed, you know, we stand with educators. So we really appreciate his support for public education. As you all know, and many of you have endorsed Jackie Goldberg, we, we want to be able to continue to support educators. And Mr. Ofero, this is a, a token of gratitude for all you do.
Thank you.
Thank you very much. Okay. Again, thank you very much for your support, and thank you, and remember, Jackie Goldberg is the person.
Okay, okay. We'll present in a second. I have some things to present to you, too. Hey, so, so what Roman did not mention is, is what dedication can mean when you go back to your community and you elevate, you elevate the standards of the neighborhood where you came from. So here's a little bit of background about Coach Gomez. He graduated from Belmont High School in 1985, graduated from USC with a political science major in 1989, and went on to teach social studies at Belmont High School in the fall of 89. In 2014, he returned to coach the cross-country teams, and in two years, led them to their first title since 2002. That's how dedication makes a difference in our neighborhoods, and when you can celebrate someone who decides to give back and uplift his entire community, and that's what Coach Gomez is all about.
Coach of the Year.
Coach of the Year, too.
By different various agencies.
Okay, so Coach of the Year, you know, his, his accomplishments, you can probably find them on Google, you know? They're so huge and, and well-deserved. But they also include 2018 California Coaches Association, Girls Cross Country Coach of the Year, 2018 National Federation High Schools, California and Western States Boys Cross Country Coach of the Year. So we want to recognize Coach Gomez, the boys and girls team, and with some tokens of our appreciation. So this is to the girls Division Four, so let me hand this off to the, the captain, team captain.
Thank you.
And here's to the boys Division Four, runner-up, you know, and next year, you'll be back at the top, no doubt. I'm going to do this, because this is, this is my great honor right here. Thank you. I appreciate your support. Yeah. Dr. Mendoza. Yeah. Thank you. Thank you. You bet. Thank you so much. Appreciate it. So I think we're going to go take those pictures on the steps. Yeah? And, okay. Just follow William.
Madam President, there's been a request from a member to continue Item 1B, B as in boy, to July 2nd.
Okay, without objection.
And further, there's a request from a member to continue Item 1D, D as in David, to June 7.
Okay, without objection, that will be the order. Mr. Rue, did you have an announcement?
No. Madam President, Item 1C, I'd like to move that we remove the late fees and approve the lien for $1,054.46.
Objection? Thank you very much, sir. Let's go ahead and vote on that. Let's open the roll. Close the roll and tabulate the vote.
12 ayes.
Let's go ahead and vote on the remaining balance of item number one.
And that's 1A, Madam President.
Correct. Let's open the roll. Close the roll and tabulate the vote.
12 ayes.
Mr. Busciano, are you ready for Item 17, sir?
Thank you, colleagues. Each and every May here in the city of Los Angeles, in recognition of National Travel and Tourism Week, we are given an opportunity to discuss the tourism impacts in this region and the city of Los Angeles. And I'd like to welcome here to the table, we have Don Lu, the Executive Director of our city's Tourism and Development Department, Javier Cano, which is the LATCB's Chair of Tourism Marketing District, and Ernie Woodton, the President and CEO of the LA Tourism Convention Bureau. And we also, I'd be remiss if I didn't introduce and, and also welcome Patty McNurbit, who is the Senior Vice President of LA Tourism as well. You know, colleagues, we are excited about the 2018 and how much of an impact the tourism industry has, has poured into our local economy. From Venice Beach, Discovery Cube in the Valley, to our Hospitality Entertainment District at DTLA, Hollywood, the Watts Towers, the Battleship Iowa, which we're just announced as a top-five-most-visited museums in the area, and currently hosting the Cirque du Soleil, Amaluna. LA Tourism generated a record $36.6 billion in the region's economy just last year, which is nearly a 5% increase over the previous years. And in 2018, the mayor and I, along with Council, Councilmember Price, celebrated a record 50 million visitors coming through our city. So with that, before you colleagues, LATCB handed a, a handout on how tourism builds communities. And I want to thank the LATCB for launching that Everyone is Welcome campaign that I believe has, has triggered these economic impacts to our region. So with that, I'll turn it over. Who's going to kick it off? Ernie? Or Don Lu? Not to be confused with Dom Nu, but Don, you're up.
Good morning.
For me, Dominic. Dom, I mean.
Good morning. Thank you, Mr. Busciano. Go ahead. I don't think your mic is on. Can we do a mic check really quick or get closer to the mics?
You're on now.
Am I on now?
Yes, you're on.
Good morning. Thank you, two councilmen. Thank you, councilmembers. It's my honor to be here, speaking before you at our annual National Travel and Tourism Week presentation. We thank you for arranging the time to speak with you all today. I'm Don Lu, Executive Director of the, of your department of Convention and Tourism This is a good opportunity for, for us to remind the council about the decision you made five years ago to move the Convention Center Department, as you used to have it, and create a new department called Convention and Tourism Development. So in addition to the Convention Center, my small but mighty department also has responsibility for managing our contract with our Tourism Board, LA Tourism and Convention Board. It's a pivotal, pivotal time for tourism, working together. I'm excited for the strides we've made in the last year, particularly moving the Convention Center expansion and modernization project forward to create a more dynamic campus that will attract new and expanded conventions, transitioning to the Convention Center as we, and downtown into an even more powerful economic engine. We continue to see progress made to increase our lodging inventory with hotels under construction and the advancement of projects in our hotel development pipeline, especially near and around the Convention Center, as we move closer to reaching our goal of 8,000 total rooms within walking distance. For your information, we've doubled that number from about 2,500 five years ago to over 5,000 hotels, hotel rooms within walking distance. Additionally, the CTD Commission, in cooperation with the city and business stakeholders, is working on developing an actionable tourism master plan, the first time ever done in the city of Los Angeles. We're about halfway completed and will provide the city with a long-term, long-range plan to address infrastructure and service needs that will enhance our visitor experience as well as the community experience as we prepare for the future of tourism in Los Angeles. Given that the city is in budget hearings this week, it's timely to recognize the significant impact that our department has on revenues. First, I'd like to remind the council that our department is not funded by the general fund. We are completely funded by Convention Center revenues and a generous contribution from the Tourism Board. And we have a direct responsibility through managing our contract with LATCB in providing over $300 million in revenue to the city's general fund. This week marks National Travel and Tourism Week, an annual event established by Congress, and it's the perfect time to celebrate the powerful impact tourism has on our communities. I'd like to now introduce Ernest Woodton Jr., who oversees marketing and selling Los Angeles around the world, as President and CEO of Los Angeles Tourism and Convention Board.
Thank you, Don, and thank you to the members of City Council for giving us a few moments to update you on all things tourism this morning. As you recall, and as mentioned by Councilman Busciano, it was just a couple of months ago that we announced, along with Councilman Busciano, the mayor, Mayor Garcetti, and Councilman Wesson, that indeed Los Angeles had reached its North Star goal of more than 50 million visitors. And we had targeted 2020 for that to happen, and it happened unbelievably two years earlier. And today, we're here to announce for the first time, and we put it in the LA Times yesterday, but for the first time publicly, that those 50 million people had an incredible impact on Los Angeles, and more importantly, on the communities of Los Angeles, as it strengthened and enhanced the lives of average-day Angelenos in unimaginable ways. Those tourists, those 50 million people, spent a record $23.9 billion in LA in our hotels, in our regions, our museums, restaurants, taxicabs, and more. That's 23, almost $24 billion. I challenge people all the time to talk about the number-one industry, number-two industry in Los Angeles, and people quickly, if you give them five chances to do this, they never think of tourism. But this is a $24 billion business, and I'm told by economists that to fully appreciate what it means to our neighborhoods throughout the county, you've got to multiply that times an econometric factor, which says that that business is worth $36 billion to our community, a record $36.6 billion last year, more than $1.2 billion spent year over year, which is an incredible number. I'm particularly proud of the fact that tourism delivered to the city general fund more than $308 million last year. And for some historical perspective, I would share to you, it wasn't more than six years ago that that number was in the low $100 million. That number has grown to more than $300 million in a, a compound average growth rate of more than 11% a year, and I speculate that it is the fastest-growing source of income for the city of Los Angeles. We've estimated with outside consultants that for the lack of tourism here in LA, that every Angelino would have more than $875 per year of additional taxes to pay. So this is a great business model tourism, and I'm proud that we've been able to deliver two years ahead of time our North Star goal of 50 million. An important part of what we do is funding for the ammunition we need to go around the world to tell our story. And the Tourism Marketing District has been a game-changer, volunteering contributions for more than 200 hotels toward this effort. The lead of that Tourism Marketing District is sitting to my right, Javier Cano, and I'd like him to say a few words.
Thank you. Good morning, ladies and gentlemen. I have the pleasure of serving as the Chairman of the Los Angeles Tourism and Marketing District, which is comprised of hotels with 50 rooms or more in the city of Los Angeles.
Can you turn on his microphone? We can't.
Mr. Spindler, you disrupted the meeting. Okay, you're disrupting the meeting.
You're disrupting the meeting. Sergeants, can you please escort Mr. Spindler out of our council chambers?
Mr. Spindler, you've been ordered removed.
He walked in and he disrupted this meeting.
Removed quietly.
I was told to talk to my clients yesterday in the office.
Mr. Spindler.
Mr. Correct. Mr. Correct.
Mr. Spindler, please, you've been ordered removed. Leave quietly now.
You almost got my tribe deported yesterday with that bullshit.
You're disrupting the meeting, Mr. Spindler.
They want to know where I was yesterday.
You've been ordered removed.
I want to know where I was. Where was I yesterday?
Goodbye, Mr. Spindler. Leave the room.
That's your attorney, Norrie. Norrie, not your lawyer.
I'm sorry, he's continuing to shout all the way out, and we can't continue the meeting until he's gone. And he's still shouting. And he's still shouting. My apologies.
Certainly. Okay.
Sorry about that, gentlemen. We had an interruption to our meeting. As you can tell, Mr. Streffin has been escorted out of our council chambers. You can go ahead and resume your presentation.
Thank you very much. Well, good morning again, ladies and gentlemen. As mentioned before, I have the pleasure of chairing the Tourism Marketing District here in the city of Los Angeles, which represents all hotels over 50 rooms. And the Tourism Marketing District has been critical in expanding LA's ability to be able to market the destination on a global basis. As Vice President and Market General Manager of the Ritz-Carlton and the JW Marriott at LA Live, I see firsthand every day how tourism impacts Angelenos and their families. Tourism continues to have a profound impact on jobs across Los Angeles, as last year, tourism and related industries.
I'm sorry, can I interrupt you for just a second? I need to make a note that Mr. Spindler continues to disrupt this meeting. I can hear him from outside our council chambers. Mr. City Attorney, can you confirm that?
Yes, I heard it, too. He was making enough noise that it was actually difficult to hear you at one point.
Very sorry about that. We just got to make sure we note that for the record. Go ahead.
Okay, certainly. Well, just continue on. As mentioning, that over 534,000 Angelenos were employed within the leisure and hospitality sector countywide, one of our largest and healthiest sectors with overall 9,700 new jobs that were created last year. This translates to 1 in 5, 1 in 8.5 workers across the region that depend on tourism for a livelihood. At the foundation of our hospitality industry is our hard-working employees. They're absolutely critical to our success, as they not only deliver services to our guests, but also are delivering experiences that can have a long-lasting transformative impact. As someone who's spent an entire career in hospitality, starting off as a front desk clerk while going to college, I certainly understand the importance of taking an active role in a robust training programs and on-the-job experience to grow further careers in this rewarding field. In fact, according to U.S. Travel, travel and tourism is the number-one industry for first-time jobs nationwide. These are good first jobs that give workers skills, confidence, and experience that are essential to successful careers in a broad spectrum of occupations. I want to recognize more than the half-million hard-working Angelenos within our hospitality community and the value they bring to Los Angeles. As our city ambassadors, their everyday passion is what makes Los Angeles one of the most welcoming places to visit. Thank you very much.
Thank you, Javier. Last year, we shared, the Tourism Board shared with the council, our new advertising campaign, which is called Everyone is Welcome. This campaign was unusual in many ways. Most tourism boards, when presenting campaigns for their locations, talk about the assets of the, of the location, its sightseeing places and things like that. The Tourism Board here in Los Angeles took a very different tact with the Everyone is Welcome campaign to focus on the diversity of Los Angeles before we even talked about all the great things you can do and see while you're here. This was a, a significant change of advertising and marketing approach, which was copied, quite frankly, around the country. Its success- Its success is unbelievable. So far, that campaign has had more than $2 billion impressions, not just in the United States, but around the world. The campaign itself has been seen in Mexico, for example, by more than 30,000 people that have listened and watched the entire campaign and have voted with their feet to come to Los Angeles. This campaign was particularly impressive to international visitors, and those international visitors are our best customers. They represent more than 32% of our total spending, despite the fact that there's only about 8 million of them. But beyond attracting international visitors, we believe that the "Everyone is Welcome" campaign positively influences civic pride here in Los Angeles about our lifestyle, our greater community, the diversity of our people, our ideas, our culture, and that is what, in fact, powers Los Angeles to be the great city that it is. And so now, after having achieved the 50 million goal, we look forward to our next goal, our next measurable goal. And we want to ensure that our industry, the tourism industry, puts greater emphasis going forward, not just so much on the numbers and the dollars, but more emphasis on the impact that tourism plays in building communities across the region of Los Angeles. Moving forward, the Tourism Board will measure our industry's success in terms of not only the economic, as I pointed out, in our visitor numbers, but how we are impacting the betterment of livelihoods around Los Angeles. We'll put greater emphasis on harnessing the power of tourism to continue delivering significant impact in tangible economic businesses, not just for large businesses, small businesses in all communities, starting with underserved communities in the region. And through these benefits, tourism can be a partner in improving the quality of life of our residents, enhancing undeserved communities, further influencing civic and cultural pride, while at the same time developing sustainable career opportunities in tourism. We estimate there are going to be thousands and thousands of new jobs over the next 10 years by way of tourism that we have to begin training our young people, like the people we've just seen earlier today, to be prepared for, important jobs that need skills training that the Tourism Board is going to be supporting. And finally, to remind us all of the importance of the role that tourism plays in the lives of our fellow Angelenos, we wanted to showcase, actually, some of the faces of the Los Angeles hospitality and tourism community, who specialize in creating memorable experiences for our visitors around the world every day. I ask that you look at the monitor just for a second.
I've always said to myself, if you take L.A. away from me, I'm gonna perhaps die of sadness.
A fusce is kind of similar to an enclosed custodia, kind of like a pancake. Inside stuffed with cheese, pork, all varies depending what the person wants to eat. We were filmed in La La Land, a cameo part. We just got this email, hey, we want to film here. I didn't even know what it was about, and then all of a sudden I found out, I was like, oh, crazy. It's the best thing that's ever happened, and without tourism, I don't think we would be where we're at.
We have our Hollywood vehicles. People, especially that travel from afar, want to look at these special cars they saw on TV or in movies. Once they walk up the stairs, they're like, wow, you know, they get so excited. It's fun to have these experiences, go home, and share these wonderful experiences with my family.
One of the things, you know, that has really impacted me is the contact with other cultures. We have grown rather dramatically. The satisfaction to serve this many people, you know, is one of the things that we really, really enjoy.
Here, on any given day, you have all ages, all walks of life. Our lives here would be pretty boring without that tourist traffic.
Tourism really drives a business here. For me, being in Hollywood is really special. You know, when I actually chose this location on Hollywood and Vine, there's just a certain hustle and bustle, and for me, I don't think I'd have it any other way or be in any other place.
I get to oversee 125 acres of premier shopping and lifestyle center. We see about 25 million visitors a year, so when we see, you know, 3.5% to 4% increase in tourism, that directly affects jobs, that puts money into real estate. So as we see the increase in tourism, we also see the domestic business really continue to rise too.
They're gonna remember for the rest of their life. L.A. is like no other. It's incredible how tourism here in L.A. and here in Venice itself has grown. We specialize in making memories for these people, and it's a beautiful thing.
I was asked last night by the LAX Chamber of Commerce what got me up in the morning, what was I most excited about my job? And I answered that what makes me most excited is the fact that tourism drives so many jobs, so many families in Los Angeles are able to send their children to school, to pay their rent, mortgage, and advance their lives. And so I want to salute the incredible diversity of workforce that we have here in L.A. We lead with the diversity of our people. This is an example to the world, and we're pleased to have a role in it. Council members, we are very appreciative this morning of your time, and thank you for your continued support, each and every one of you, for tourism and the work that we do around the globe. Thank you for your recognition of tourism as an industry that not only brings enormous economic benefit to L.A., but serves as a leading employer, and also one that promotes the cultural appreciation at a time where awareness and cultural appreciation is in short supply. We look forward to continuing our work with you, members of City Council, to ensure that tourism builds stronger, more prosperous communities in Los Angeles, not only yesterday, but today and tomorrow and beyond. Thank you for your time.
Thank you. Gentlemen, we have a couple of members on the queue. Mr. Price, followed by Mr. Rue.
Thank you, Madam President. Gentlemen, this is just a real exciting day today. Councilman Busciano, thank you for bringing the presentation forward today. We know how important tourism is, especially in our community, and we're excited to see what an economic engine 50 million citizens, 50 million visitors creates, and we look forward to expanding that. You talked a little bit about the multiplier effect of our tourism ministry, the over-half million people that are employed in leisure hospitality, and some 10,000 jobs that could be added over the next several years. We know it's also important that we have an expanded convention center to accommodate future growth. We are in the process of entering into a P3 to do just that. But could you outline, maybe, Don, outline the importance of expanding the convention center, what it's going to mean for bringing in new business and maintaining the business that we have currently?
Thank you, Councilman. Thanks to the full council, on December 7th, you approved an exclusive negotiating agreement with AEG and their partners at the Plenary Group. We spent that time doing two things, negotiating the working documents that will create a 40-year partnership, perhaps, and the other thing we've been doing is spending almost $10 million designing the new facility. Our good friends at L.A. Tourism has estimated that we've lost potentially $6 billion worth of business over the last 10 years due to the fact that our convention center is too small or doesn't have enough contiguous space for the mega-shows that want to come to Los Angeles. In fact, within the last year, just the announcement that we're finally going to expand the convention center has led to major letters of intent from national organizations that have committed to coming here in years like 2023, 2025, even 2027 and beyond. So the fact that we are finally moving forward on adding another 300,000 square feet to the convention center, giving us almost a million square feet of contiguous space on the exhibition hall level, a brand-new ballroom, and connecting it, literally connecting it, to an expanded JW Marriott Hotel and L.A. Live, has been game-changing.
Eight, another 850 rooms at the JW Marriott Hotel. So we're very excited about the partnership and appreciate the opportunity that the council has given us to continue that relationship into the future. Good. I'm excited to learn of the master plan that's going to really help chart our way for the next several years, and an important part of that discussion has to be, I think, around this notion of cultural tourism. I know it's something that has had an expanded interest there at LATCB, but could you talk, Ernie, maybe a little bit about that a little bit more in terms of cultural tourism, what we're doing to encourage folks to come, not just to Hollywood and downtown, but to East L.A., Le Mert Park, South L.A., really taking in the cultural diversity and the opportunities that exist?
Yeah, I'd be very happy to. Yet, cultural tourism is a very important motivator for travel. When first-time travelers, and we know this through our research, come to L.A., they want to do all of the normal things that tourists want to do. They want to see the Hollywood sign, they want to go to see the Walk of Fame, the Getty Center, that kind of thing. The second, third, fourth, fifth visit, what most travelers want to see from around the world, they want to live like an Angelino. They want to see how we live. They've learned about us through the movies and television. We are intriguing to them for so many reasons that we take for granted here. Our diversity is very important, but our lifestyle is a sort of template for the way people want to live around the world. Our culture, Angelenos are very optimistic people. Tomorrow's going to be better than today. We're very creative people.
What kind of things can we do to portray that? What kinds of things can we do to encourage that kind of exploration?
Well, the kind of thing that we're doing in the Tourism Board is to encourage them to see all parts of Los Angeles. Recently, we produced the African-American guide to these historical places in Los Angeles that were mentioned in the Green Book. We had more places in the Academy Award Best Picture Green Book in Los Angeles than any other city in the United States, other than Harlem, New York City. Most people did not know that. So that was just one element of how we're going after what we call infinity markets, markets that have specific interests in Los Angeles, and to get them to move around Los Angeles, not just to the statues, if you will, the Hollywood sign and those kinds of things, to disperse them around this region and all of the neighborhoods. The Tourism Board is ramping up that effort, not only for the benefit of the tourists, but more importantly, for the people in underserved, undeserved, underserved, I'm sorry, communities around the city. We think that's going to be an important part of the magnet for coming here, and we're committed to developing those kinds of programs.
Well, we're excited about the continued partnership, and let's just work hard to make sure that success is realized. Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Price. Mr. Rue, followed by Mr. Harris-Dawson.
Thank you, Madam Chair. You know, as home to the, probably, the most tourist attractions in the city of Los Angeles, from Universal Studios to LACMA, all the museums in Museum Row, LACMA, the Peterson, the New Academy, the La Brea Tar Pits, to Griffith Park, the Observatory, Original Farmer's Market, Grove, the list goes on and on, and in case I miss someone, I know I'm going to get in trouble by someone in the district.
Thank you, Mr. Rue, for showing off.
I've got a job for him.
You really do. Go ahead.
But I want to thank you. I want to thank the leadership of Councilmember Joe Busciano, leading this committee, as well as General Manager Don Liu, and the Los Angeles Tourism and Convention Board for your unprecedented success yet again, for breaking all records and fostering this very important economic driver for the city of Los Angeles. But I also want to thank you for working with my office and the new levels of collaboration and outreach that you have with not just my office and the City Council, but with neighborhoods in wayfinding, in outreach, and to make sure that both the tourists and residents alike have a good time, experience a proper view of Los Angeles, as well as being safe and protected, both for the tourists and the neighbors. And I really want to thank you, and I look forward to continue working with you and collaborating with you, especially on the outreach and all the different new technologies we're doing to make sure that residents are protected, residents and communities are protected, while at the same time, tourists have a great time in Los Angeles and want to come back. Thank you.
Thank you, Councilmen.
Thank you, Mr. Rue. Mr. Harris-Dawson?
Thank you so much, Madam Chair, and congratulations to all of you for your work, Councilmen Busciano and Price, for their leadership on our side. This is very, very exciting news. I especially want to call out and appreciate how you all, as much as anybody, has held Los Angeles up as a beacon of light and a beacon of hope in a relatively dark time in the history of the United States. And so I think the world sees that, and when they still love the American people and the United States, but they picked Los Angeles to come to on purpose because of who we are and what we represent. I have a very specific question. We had a number of events in and around our district over the years, or events that impact our district, and I've spoken with all of you before about this, where there are things that sort of fall beneath the radar. So as an example, in my district, there's First AME Church. Well, you know when there's a convention in town, because when you show up to church, there are exponentially more people there to hear the music and to be a part of the celebration. There are other places in the district like that, you know, to this moment, at this moment, people travel here to go to the Marathon Store because of the, partly because of the tragedy that we just saw, and so that stuff kind of falls under the radar. For us, it's real important to be able to know and isolate what impact, if any, you all have been able to document that home sharing is having on tourism to the region. And how does that, is it helping us? Is it, does it make us, does it make no difference, appreciable difference? Does it spread out the impact of tourism dollars to the region and to our city? And so I'd love for you all to speak to that point.
Thank you very much for that, and I was in your district not too long ago for the screening of the amazing great Sarita Franklin movie, and it was absolutely incredible to be at the original church where that was done 40 years ago. It was just amazing. The answer to your question is a very complicated one, candidly. There are pros and cons to everything that we do, and in the world of home sharing and the entire new industry of home sharing, there are pros and cons to that. One thing we know is that in Los Angeles, we don't have sufficient numbers of hotel rooms to accommodate all the people that want to come in. I think of it as a coffee cup, and when you have supply coming in that's more than the coffee cup can handle, it tends to flow over into other accommodations, and that's what's happening in the area of home sharing. We've calculated, the Tourism Board is watching and looking at this issue very carefully, that there may be as many as 18,000 home-sharing units that are comparable to hotels throughout L.A. What we know is, because there's not enough hotel rooms, and we're encouraging more hotel rooms to be developed, important for this convention center development, we know that people are either choosing or being forced to have to stay in those places because they got to sleep somewhere when they come here. Our challenge is, we want to make sure that those home-sharing accommodations live up to the same standards that we have in our hotels. Our hotels spend enormous amount of monies to make sure that they are safe, that they're secure, that they're sanitary, that they meet codes, that kind of thing. So from the Tourism Board's point of view, we want to make sure that that's matched, dollar for dollar, moment for moment, for those that want to put up their homes to traveling tourists. Is it a good thing that we have a place for people to go that can't get into hotels? The answer is probably yes, it's a good thing. But we've got to make sure that's, or we encourage City Council, as we think about all of the rules around that body or that industry, that they mimic the careful rules that have been written over decades that govern the work of our hotels, because there, we know those things are safe and secure, and the traveling public knows that to be true as well. I hope that answers your question. It's not a black-and-white sort of answer, but it's the best we can do as this industry grows and becomes important, not only in L.A., but around the world.
Well, thank you for that. I'd invite you all to be a very vocal part of the discussion that we're having on home sharing. We continue to meet it out here on the council and try to make those policies that you're describing. describing. Also, I think it's, you know, we have large home sharing companies now with significant presence in Los Angeles, it would be great to see us really engage them in the Tourism Board and, and in the Tourism Council as well, because it just seems like for the foreseeable future, they're going to be a big part of how people experience, experience Los Angeles, come here, spend money here, and be a part of our tourism pie. So, thank you.
Thank you.
Great, thank you, Mr. Harris-Dawson. Mr. Buscagno to close?
Thank you, Madam President. I appreciate the line of questioning and the comments from my colleagues here. Thank you to our panel. I, I just know that we can do, we can do more, and we're, we're on the rise as far as our tourism, tourism industry and where we're going. We, we can't ignore the fact that we're also investing in our infrastructure to accommodate our visitors with fourteen billion dollar land access modernization plan at the airport and our L A waterfront, hundreds of millions of dollars to improve and redevelop the Wilmington and San Pedro water fronts. But I do want to recognize our top threat colleagues. Top threat today, survey after survey, our top threat shows that tourists are concerned about the homeless issue in Los Angeles. So we're hopeful that with this information, that we do more to continue to solve homelessness price, crisis in our city, because it can have an impact on those visiting, it can have an impact on our, our local economy, since this is, you know, one in nine jobs, more than five hundred thirty-four thousand jobs just last year. So any threat to that industry can clearly help, impact how we do business here. So we're looking forward to continuing to, to support solutions to solving homelessness. I heard it, we hosted the National League of Cities Summit. It was an amazing opportunity, Javier, thanks, at the hotel for welcoming nearly four thousand municipal leaders. They loved our city, but they were also talked about looking at best practices to solve homelessness issues in our city. So thank you so much for your time. I really appreciate the, the engagement and the ongoing success of what we're seeing here in our tourism industry, in our city and throughout the region. Thank you very much. Thank you, Madam President. Mr. President, colleagues, thank you.
Okay, let's, what action do we need to take on this, Mr. Clerk?
Mr. President, we should receive and file this matter inasmuch as the presentation has been given.
All right, let's do that. Brings us where?
Thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you, guys.
Mr. President, would you like to do that without objection?
Congratulations, Mr. Lou. Otto, grandpa of Otto. Mr. Clerk, you said?
Would you like to do this without, without objection or take a vote on the matter?
Oh, just without objection.
Very good, sir. Mr. President, that brings us to item number two.
All right, well, do we have any cards?
Yes, sir.
Okay, Kevin Jaquet, Patricia Whitson, and Malana, please come forward and identify yourself.
And, Mr. President, while they're making their way up, if I may, there has been a special one that's been circulated and is before council.
Okay, well, let's, okay, yes.
I'm Kevin Jaquet.
Go ahead, sir.
For the past.
Speak to the mic, if you would.
For, for more than twenty years, I've been harassed by the city because they say that weeds, trash, rubbish is on my property. In nineteen ninety-six, I did a remodel on my house, and the extra wood and whatnot that comes from a remodel was placed on the city's property. I started receiving these letters then. Once it was over, I cleared the property, I bought that property from the city, I cemented the property so that no weeds or trash or anything could be put on that property, but I still keep getting harassed by the city with these letters to clean property, and I have pictures of the property completely cemented. I need to know what can I do to clear that?
Okay, why don't we stand to the side?
Thank you.
Yes, next speaker. Could we help with the handheld mic? Yes, ma'am.
Thank you for this opportunity. My name again is Patricia Whitson. I'm an ordained minister, and I'm a missionary that just flew in from overseas West Africa. I brought back with me my daughter, who is two-year-old mentality, she's twenty-two years old, but she's a regional client. Unfortunately, as we flew in, I had a heart attack, but I, my destination was Los Angeles, California. I came in, and after four days of traveling from overseas and four days coming to L A, my beautiful state I love so much, I experienced the first bad experience of my daughter at Union Station when we arrived on the train from the airport. She was abducted, kidnapped, and they found the abductors on the video.
Well, Ms. Whitson, that, that is your time. Maybe I can have the sergeants or we can have someone let her finish her statement to you, and if I could have the, the next speaker. Next speaker, please come forward.
My name is John Colasavage. Thank you for hearing me. I received a notice regarding a property, six forty-one St. Paul, that no longer exists, and regarding weeds. This notice was dated April tenth. I received it May second, asking me to be in this room on April seventeenth, so two weeks after I received the notice. It also said I could come here this morning at nine o'clock. The doors were closed here at nine o'clock. So I'm asking now, as I notice I'm not even on the agenda today, although I'm holding a notice to appear here, that I could be put on the agenda regarding L A twenty nineteen weed abatement. My property is ten twenty-seven Wilshire Boulevard. It's all concrete and no weeds. So if I could please be put on today's agenda, I would appreciate, so we can resolve this. Thank you.
Did you say Joanna?
No, I did not. Are you talking general public comment? I'm going to call you in a minute. Okay, on this item, let's open the roll, close the roll, tabulate the vote.
Twelve ayes.
Okay, where are we now?
Mr. President, that brings us back to general public comment, or we do have the special one.
Okay, why don't I start with general public comment, and I'll take care of Joanna Swan. Tyrone Floyd, Alexandra Hack.
It's so loud.
Yes, ma'am.
Hi, just quickly going back to that nice video, Happy Tourism Week. It's ironic because the Hotel Irwin was actually protested multiple times for calling LAPD on some comrades of mine who happened to be African American and renting a room there. So actually, tourism is not safe for all residents or visitors of hotels. Furthermore, it's interesting that you've actually increased hotel units in the past couple of years. Let's talk priorities. It really reveals your lack of moral fiber or spiritual courage in a housing and homelessness crisis. We're more interested in bringing random rich people to our city than taking care of the over fifty-five thousand, and oh, maybe more this year, I guess we'll see this month, people who are living on the streets and dying on the streets. It's interesting that Prop HHH housing units have actually gone down, oh, because of costs, right, Gil? Just costs, it's just capitalism, it's just the way it works. Oh, but we can increase hotel units. That's great, eight hundred and fifty new units, that's almost as many people who died on the street last year.
Thank you, thank you. So if I could get, Mr., do we have Chris Roth? David, and David, I can't pronounce the last name, Tyrone Floyd, yes, sir, identify yourself.
Tyrone Floyd.
Speak to the mic, sir.
Okay, Tyrone Floyd, born October fifth, nineteen fifty-two, United States veteran in Vietnam era. And, Mr. President Weston, this is to you. I've been living in the Baldwin Hills area for about five years now, and the atrocities that Department of Transportation, me, ticket riders do at night between twelve and six in the morning is, I can't even share the words to what, what they do. You can be there and be this much in the red, you got a ticket. I give a case in point, I'm dealing with prostate cancer right now, I'm going to go get treatment. About two, about a month ago, I wasn't a place to park, I was about this much out the red, I looked out the window, guy said, well, you missed about three minutes, she gave me a ticket. I laid back down because I was not feeling good, and I come back down and there was another ticket rider that wrote me another ticket saying that she didn't see the first ticket, and told me what, nothing she can do about it. I came to your office last, last year and asked you to put handicap passes over there on Santa Tomas. You said you would get back to me, and you never did. So I'm coming face to face, when are you going to stop this in our community?
Okay, thank you.
And I need to talk to somebody from your office about these tickets.
Thank you. Next speaker, please identify yourself.
I'm David Quatrochi with DSA L A and Olympics L A. Chris Roth had to leave. Just want to comment really quick on the slogan that tourism builds communities. It does not. The communities already exist, and it's really on everybody behind these boundaries to start serving the people who are already here, who created the communities a long time ago. I know you're all checked out, but I just want this to go on the record here. If Los Angeles is welcome to everybody, what about the people who already live here? The vendors and people who sell food on the street that were shown in the video, there are signs down the street saying that they can't do the same thing next to, to Union Station where this poor woman's daughter was abducted. We need to start looking at what's going on right down the street from us. There are activists and advocates doing just that right now, but the answering to money constantly and concerns over tourism for the Olympics, like the seven billion just set aside, is not the answer.
Thank you, thank you. So if I can get Alexandra Hack, Agnes Harris, Jeremiah Gordon. Jeremiah Gordon, Agnes, please come forward. Please identify yourself.
Anyes Harris.
Speak to the mic.
Anyes Harris.
Go ahead.
Good morning, councilmembers. My name is Anyes Harris, and I am representing the Los Angeles Black Worker Center. I stand before you as a master-degreed educator and former director of professional certification, director of admissions and registrar, who simultaneously and successfully held these three positions without support staff at the biweekly salary of fourteen hundred dollars and twenty-eight cents. I was terminated for requesting a raise to twenty-four hundred dollars biweekly for an additional analyst level work assignment being added to my duties. On average, I was underpaid by fifty-two thousand dollars less than my counterparts while employed for this higher education institution, providing excellent work without exception, without assistance, and with little if any supervision. I understand all too well wage discrimination and degradation. I am here, we are here, because the budget for the Civil and Human Rights Ordinance was reported at three million dollars for fiscal year two thousand nineteen.
Thank you, thank you. Next speaker, please.
Good morning, councilmembers. I'm Jeremiah Gordon, a community organizer with the L A Black Worker Center. We are here to urge the Budget and Finance Committee and the City Council members to allocate the additional funding for the Civil and Human Rights Commission. Los Angeles is the most diverse city, and this ordinance will cover a wide, wide range of discrimination protections. We support the three million dollar budget because this budget will cover twenty-five positions, including commissioners, investigators, and city attorneys. This budget includes funding for community outreach and education to our communities. Again, I urge you to allocate additional funding for the Civil and Human Rights Commission. Thank you.
Thank you, sir. Alexandra Hack. Okay, madam, Mr. Clerk, that concludes general public comment. That brings us where?
Mr. President, that brings us to special one. I believe the council member, the maker of the motion, will speak to the findings.
Okay, Mr. Corretts.
Thank you, Mr. President. I have a special one today, which was just brought to our attention, that a bill that will cause great environmental harm, S B three eighty-six, is unexpectedly being shoved through the State Senate and could be heard on the floor tomorrow, so I ask for a vote today. The state's landmark climate change legislation is under assault from utilities and water districts in the Central Valley. S B one hundred, which requires a hundred percent renewable energy in the state of California by two thousand forty-five, has been wildly heralded around the world and is already being emulated with laws in states, including Washington and New Mexico, with others following. S B three eighty-six has been introduced to try and create exemptions in S B one hundred so that utilities with dams can, instead of ramping up their renewable energy use like the rest of the state, count as renewable their hydropower dams. This is completely unnecessary, as S B one hundred already provides regulatory relief if compliance would add a significant burden to ratepayers. What this does instead is add a significant burden to other ratepayers around the state who should all be sharing the costs, and it's a first step in completely dialing back S B one hundred. We must protect and encourage strong and bold climate leadership and not allow it to be weakened. So I ask for your vote today, and I urge your support for both the findings and the adoption of this measure.
Okay, well, let's vote on the findings. Let's open the roll, close the roll, tabulate the vote.
Eleven ayes.
And sergeants, if you could let Mr. Previn come through. Mr. Previn?
Thank you, thank you, Council President Weston. It's Eric Previn, and I'm a green guy, as green as the next one. This is about Ana Caballero, it's got one called S B three eighty-six, and it's, it's fighting, apparently, the one that Corretts just talked about, Mr. De Leon's one hundred, which is from two thousand eighteen. Now, the only thing that I raise a big question about is why this has to be done so quietly without ever appearing on an agenda, as opposed to, you know, Friday. Now, he said, oh, it might be heard tomorrow. Well, how the hell do you know that? And why do we not know that? And is this really the nature of our legislation, where bodies sneak around and do things behind the public's back because they're in on the information? I find it disappointing at best, and I take note that the scurb ball flyers here and the shame of your group and your neighborhood council trying to pin the scurb ball fire on the homeless population, which was written about in the intercept. You're welcome, Bobble. Thank you for your time. Have a good day.
Mr. Corretts?
I just wanted to point out, I don't think there's any controversy to this legislation. There was no attempt at hiding the ball or doing it at the last minute intentionally, but we just became aware of not only the bill, but the fact that it is likely to be heard tomorrow, and so we don't have the time for what, what we'd otherwise normally want to do in terms of noticing.
Thank you for that clarification. All right, let's prepare to vote on this item. Open the roll, close the roll, tabulate the vote.
Eleven ayes.
And, Mr. President, there's a request to send that forthwith.
Without objection. And I'm told that we should send item sixteen forthwith as well.
Very well, sir.
Okay, what's before this body?
Mr. President, council has motions for posting and referral.
They are posted, they are referred.
The desk is clear.
Okay, announcements, members. Mr. Harris-Dawson?
Thank you so much, Mr. Chair. I'd like to ask our C D eight team to join me as we recognize a new, another departure from our office, Ms. Yanice Camacho, and we want to congratulate for her outstanding and dedicated work to Council District Eight. Yanice has served in multiple, multiple capacities as a case manager for. Uh, Yanice has served, uh, in multiple, multiple capacities as a case manager for residents, an office manager, and a financial specialist, um, to help us get checks out to the organizations and communities that help us in our events and help do services for the, uh, community. She played a major role, uh, in that, uh, work in our office. Uh, in our district, we're constantly, uh, working with different organizations with different levels of capacity and she helped bridge the gap between our bureaucracy here in the city and those organizations. Uh, before that, uh, she was in the hospitality, uh, business and worked for Marriott. Mr. Kano was here today. Um, she's being, um, poached from us by the city of Maywood, uh, where she'll go and, uh, pay, play a, uh, role in, uh, the city manager's office, uh, with the expertise that she gave, uh, here. Um, she, uh, has, uh, great background, great training and great education and, uh, she leaves the city's employment, uh, which we are very, very sad about, but you do not, uh, get to leave the CD eight family. And so, uh, today we have a couple tokens to recognize her.
Well, you know what, Mr. Harris Dawson, we should quickly put in an emergency motion that would forbid her from leaving.
I, I mean, with that, yeah.
And then we need to come up, we're gonna have Mr. Corretts come up with an anti-poaching.
Yes, yes.
All right, but we wish, we wish you well.
I, I'm, I'm being reminded that, uh, she started as an intern, uh, in Council District One, so he's, uh, Mr., Mr. Sadio is, uh, trying to get a little of our shine as, as, uh, as usual. Thank you all so much and thank you Yanice.
Give her a round of applause. Good luck to you. Good luck. Any, uh, additional announcements? Okay, if we could all rise for adjourning motions, if all present would please rise. I'm looking to my le, Mr. Buscaino.
If I may, thank you. Colleagues, I'd ask that, uh, we rise and adjourn in memory of a member of our city family out of the Department of Cultural Affairs, Raisha Yasmin Wilcox, young woman who was part of our city family, who left us all too soon. She was born on January fourteenth, nineteen seventy-seven. Growing up, Raisha was a talented dancer and musician. She played in the Hamilton High School Marching Band and later choir at Crenshaw High School, was an exceptional student. After graduating from high school, joined the Army. Raisha found her dream job and home with the Department of Cultural Affairs, where she worked for over ten years, a dedicated member of our Watts Tower Arts Center Team, where she served as their office manager. She was very much involved in the community and the lives of many people who were so close to her. At one point, she headed the UGMAA Foundation, Union of God's Musicians and Arts Ascension, an organization dedicated to the preservation, community, and social consciousness of the African-American culture. She met her fiance, Carlos, as they began traveling and exploring the world together. She was known and remembered for her smile, her warm spirit, and bright personality. Many people considered her a close friend, including her colleagues, the Department of Cultural Affairs, who have been missing her dearly. In September two thousand eighteen, Raisha was diagnosed with lung cancer and faced treatment, but the cancer spread to her brain. We lost her on April seventeenth at the young age of forty-two. She leaves behind her fiance, Carlos, parents Michael and Renee, grandparents Cecilia, brother and sister, Malika, Martin, Maya, and Michael, and many close extended family members. Our hearts go out to the entire Department of Cultural Affairs, as well as the community of Watts Towers Team, her friends, family, and other lives that she touched. She will be missed. May she rest in peace. Thank you.
Okay, I'm still looking to my left. I don't see any more adjourning motions to my left. Mr. Ru.
Thank you, Mr. President, and I will be co-presenting this with, uh, Council Member Joe Buscaino. And today, we'd like to adjourn in the memory of Chen Ling Kao. Chen Ling, Chen Ling Kao was mother and wife to Ming, Ming Kao and, and beloved friend who passed away on April sixth, two thousand nineteen, after a four-year battle with pancreatic cancer. She was fifty-five years young. She was born to In Kai Chang and Shu Shuan Yang Chang on November fifth, nineteen sixty-three in South Korea, the fifth of six children. Chen Ling was a brilliant student and a member of an elite study group in Seoul, South Korea, before immigrating to Los Angeles with her family in nineteen eighty-two. She went on to attend Cal State University Fullerton on Feb., and then on February eighth, nineteen eighty-seven, Chen Ling married Ming Shin in Anaheim with approximately twelve hundred guests in attendance. Chen Ling was a devoted wife and mother to her, their three children, Dao Li, Dao Yi, and Dao Ken. Her family will always remember her miraculous strength as she suffered through pancreatic cancer and she fought long and hard to see her son Dao Ken graduate from Brentwood School. Chen Ling will be remembered for her kindness, her loving heart, and her unwavering care and concern for others. Friends recall her as a truly beautiful person inside and out, and may she rest, may she rest in peace.
Thank you, Mr. Ru. Were there any other, um, Mr. Buscaino?
And, uh, thank you, Mr. Ru. Um, David and I had the honor of being a part of the service on April twentieth, um, for Chen and it was, um, a ser, the service was surrounded by so much love and, and faith and support of Ming and, and his kids. Um, and David, you did mention the, how she was able to see her son graduate. Now, she was, was her dream prior to departing from this world to see Dao Ken graduate and she was so weak, so Ming called the principal at Brentwood High School and the principal made the arrangement to have the graduating class come to the house because she was so weak, to be able to see Dao Ken, um, graduate high school. And that was just such, such a, a touching moment in, during the service. And her, her beautiful daughters Dao Yi and Dao Li, um, who share stories of a loving hus, a wife that she was and a loving mother and a loving friend. And she was so active in her kids' lives at school. So, uh, just our hearts and thoughts and prayers continue to go out, um, to Ming and his kids and, uh, may she rest in peace. Thank you.
All right. Any other adjourning motions? Uh, members, we now need to, uh, before we adjourn, vote on reconsideration of item one D. If we could open the roll, close the roll, tabulate the vote.
Eleven ayes.
Okay, now let's vote on it as amended.
And, Mr. President, uh, there is an amending motion, one D A, that has been circulated and is before council for its consideration.
All right, so, on that, let's open the roll, close the roll, tabulate the vote.
Eleven ayes.
Thank you. Members, this meeting's adjourned.
I'm Dr. Shen. I'm acupuncturist and the herbal expert. When I was eighteen years old, after graduating high school, I followed my grandfather to learn herbal medicine and acupuncture because less side effect and it works better and more and more people like herbal and acupuncture. The TC herbs in the house, we, uh, offered us, uh, about a thousand different herbs, shipping from the port of Los Angeles, imported from China. Some herb is for the, uh, relieve the pain, some herbal for the, like a detox. This ginseng is improve the body energy, enhance your immune systems. Hasenberry is good for the cardio-